We should give Brett equal time to put his presentation forward. If we don't have Bob Bailey, we should also have some time to do it.
One second. Discussion? I have nothing to say on that one. Grant you?
I'm for it.
Yes.
I'm good. Okay, Jim Boeck?
Move on here. Yes.
Yes.
Jim, yes.
That's the yes.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, because he was going to...
Mr. President, I also have to make a motion. So, let's start with the presentation to the council first. I don't believe Bob Bailey is here to speak on Marine Sanctuary. So, we're going to cancel that. So, item A will be canceled. Under item C, we'll add Brett Webb to speak on behalf of the Marine Sanctuary. Okay. Councilman Carl?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we do not... We drop item seven A from the agenda.
Do not?
We drop it. We say do not discuss it.
Do we have a second?
We can't hear.
Mr. Bacardle made a motion to drop item A under new business, establish a committee to explore a National Marine Sanctuary. Do we have a second? The motion dies for lack of a second. Okay, so, we go on to citizens' concerns. Oh, no, we go on to, I'm sorry, is Ann Bordland here? She's not here? Shover, Oregon update.
She's here.
She's here?
Ann is here.
No, I'm going next week.
Are you going to go next week?
Next month.
Oh, next month, thank you. Okay, citizens' concerns. Oh, I'm sorry. Brett Webb, please come forward and state your name and address for the public record.
Brett Webb, 2059 Washington Street, 404. I'm also a port commissioner at the port of Oregon. Been commercial fishing for 20 years. What I want to read to you is a speech that I recited. This is, the speech is written by Kathy Fawsmarke. She currently sits on the Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary Advisory Council. She has testified to the House Resource Committee and Senate Commerce Subcommittee.
Brett, her name again, please.
Kathy Fawsmarke.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Kathy Fawsmarke, and I am the co-chair of an organization called the Alliance of Communities for Sustainable Fishers. We are a regional group representing both recreational and commercial fishing interests in central California. Our group, and myself personally, have had extensive dealings with the Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary, as well as, to a lesser degree, with the Channel Islands and Gulf of Fairlawn's National Marine Sanctuary. We have studied the National Marine Sanctuary Act and the Monterey Bay Sanctuary's designation document and management plan, the charter bylaws for the Sanctuary Advisory Council, and we have participated extensively in the Monterey Sanctuary's management plan review process that has been going on for nearly five years. We have also communicated both in writing and face-to-face with a variety of NOAA officials, including Deputy Director of the Sanctuary Program Michael Weiss, Program Director Dan Basta, and NOAA Administrator Admiral Conrad Lavenbacher. Lastly, in terms of background, our membership also was extensively involved in efforts to create the Monterey Sanctuary in the late 80s and early 90s. We have had firsthand experience in the community discussion that occurred about having a federal agency to manage our precious local resources. To be very direct, while sanctuary status for a given area can bring in federal resources and some benefits, you need to consider if the good outweighs the potential difficulties of dealing with this federal agency. As I have just outlined to you, this opinion is based on a long and oftentimes difficult experience with this program. I do want to start out with some positive things that can happen with sanctuary status that you should certainly consider. The sanctuary can bring federal dollars and staffing to work on such issues as water quality protection, marine research projects, and educating the public. It might, and I stress the word "might," also create protections against offshore oil and gas development. I'll discuss this more later. In Monterey, the Sanctuary's Water Quality Protection Program has done a lot of good work in bringing this to public attention and coordinating water quality efforts from a multitude of agencies, and including our agriculture community. With regard to the Ag Plan, which is currently, which currently exists in a voluntary program developed collaboratively with the agriculture community, I think this is now a model of where this should go. The Sanctuary eventually did a very good job with this, although it's my understanding that there was a rough start to this with the Sanctuary making early threats to directly regulate agricultural process practices. As you can imagine, the agriculture, agricultural community resisted this. It was primarily their economic and political clout that the Sanctuary backed off and instead went with the voluntary approach, which has worked quite well. The agricultural interests in Monterey County alone are approximately $4 billion a year, so they have the economic clout to keep this federal agency alive. There have been numerous other water quality efforts from the Sanctuary, including such programs as First Flush, which documents the materials coming down storm drains during the first rain cycle of the season. There are numerous other volunteer-based programs to clean up rivers and also to report problems as they arise. Overall, this coordination and education role on the part of the Sanctuary has been a good thing, and something that was desired by the fishing community and the greater public when sanctuary status was granted. Sanctuary status also brings federal dollars to support marine research. The Monterey Sanctuary has done a fair amount of mapping and other resource assessments. With that being said, there was an exception on the part, an expectation on the part of the fishing community that there would be a lot of collaborative research and data gathering for such things as harvested species that would regionally improve management. This has never happened, and in fact appears that the Sanctuary has no interest in doing this. The Sanctuary has initiated a number of public education programs to get the public to value marine resources and the uniqueness of our area. They have done a pretty good job with this, and they have even had a couple of projects that emphasize outreach with the fishing community. At least in our area, there is no one else who does this on a large-scale basis.
One of the main advan... You know, walk up to the podium and state your name and address, and state that you support what they spoke of, and we can get this process moving. We have folks for and against us, so I'd like to remind you to show respect to the other side. I mean, we're all here to sort through this, so if you could just please be respectful, I would really appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Webb, you have five minutes to speak again if you would like. Have you covered it?
I think I've pretty, I thank you, Tim. I thank everybody for bringing me. It speaks for itself.
Looks like I have Dave Wright signed up again to speak on the fisheries.
It's okay to stand here.
Please do, state your name and address for the record.
My name is David Lewis Wright, Newport, Oregon. 445... Thank you for taking the time and the ability to comment. This issue is very, very important. I'm Dave Wright. I'm General Manager of Pacific Trimp in Newport, Oregon, and also General Manager at Ban Pacific in Charleston, Oregon. We employ in Newport over 200, we have over 200 employees, and we also have in Charleston over 100 employees. I'm fourth generation in the seafood industry, and I'm just happy because Oregon's seafood products, to me, are the healthiest protein on the planet. I believe we should follow the OPAC guidelines. For years, from Eureka, California, Astoria, Oregon, these grounds, there's very few grounds that produce as much product that comes off of the Port Orford area. It is a very, very, a very important area to the, to the industry in Oregon. And I can't stress enough on losing areas like Port Orford to a sanctuary, which is a potential, that the jobs that could be lost that are so dear to our industry. I think that's basically, I'm very, very concerned because we've also got wave energy and wind energy and a lot of other, it seems like it's a land ground, and it's very, very concerning to the folks on the, on the Oregon coast. And this is just one area in, in Port Orford that might seem small, but it's extremely important and vital to the seafood industry in Oregon. Any questions?
Let's see, we have Hugh Link who'd like to speak on the fisheries.
Hello, councilors, my name is Hugh Link. My address for the record is Peal Box 1060, Coos Bay, Oregon. I am the Executive Director of the Oregon Dungeonist Crab Commission. We represent 423 permitted crab fishers in Oregon that have permits to fish everywhere in Oregon waters. I wanted to let you know that Oregon has the only MSC-certified dungeonist crab fishery in the world. We're a very sustainable fishery, our, the Oregon waters are healthy, our fisheries are sustainable, and our bounty is some of the finest seafood to grace a plate anywhere from any ocean. There are suggestions that the, that a National Marine Sanctuary in Oregon could make us lose control of fisheries management to a sanctuary director, who would be a federal official with no local accountability. This is a concern to our commission and the industry, and our commission is tasked to address issues that could affect access to our valuable resource. Unlike a marine reserve, a National Marine Sanctuary cannot be reversed and given back. Because of that, and the history of what has happened in marine sanctuaries to date in the country, there will likely be quite a bit of resistance from the fishing community when it comes to any proposal that deals with areas that all Oregon fishing permitted vessels have a right to fish in. We've seen many issues in Oregon that would limit or change our traditional uses on our coast, and Oregon has processes for dealing with these issues. This process lately has been referred to as the Oregon Way. Recent examples would be marine reserves and wave energy. The Oregon Way is a complete process, which is a public process, and it goes through the Ocean Policy Advisory Council. OPAC has already done a review for a National Marine Sanctuary proposal in 2005 and 2006, and has a well-written status report that I would suggest all of you read. I just wanted to say today that we urge you to proceed with caution and embrace the Oregon Way, and make sure this is a complete public process with all citizens in Oregon. Thank you.
James Jennings?
My name's James Jennings, and I live Hubbard Creek Road. I'm 4120 Hubbard Creek Road. I'm a commercial fisherman in your town, and like the fellows before me, I definitely want to express my concern over having another regulatory commission in charge of my income and anything to do with the port and dredging or any other further stuff as was stated in the speech that was listed before. I think it's really like what has been stated. A lot of thought needs to be given to this subject before it is pushed on through. It seems like it's another example of how some things can be brought to you as a present in a pretty picked package, but then when you open it up, it's not so pretty whatsoever. So, that's all I want to say. I don't want to take up a lot of time. I know there's other people that want to speak. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Scott Spencer?
My name is Scott Spencer. I live in Sixes, Oregon, right up the road from here, and I'm a seafood buyer, processor, one of those little jobs that, you know, are hundreds of around here that depend on the seafood industry. And in my experience, it seems like anything that, you know, like Jimbo just said, anything that allows more control of our fisheries and, you know, income that they provide, going into some other committee is not a good thing, you know? And if it needs to be studied more, then it seems like we shouldn't even bother with it, in my personal opinion. That's all. I don't want to waste any time. I enjoy my job.
Scott Pearson?
I'm Scott Pearson. I'm originally from Roseburg. I got here three years ago. Commercial captain when my boat gets fixed. I come from a school of common sense, black and white, cut and dry. There's a noose around our necks right now, and the first agency we got here tightened down a little bit. This next one that comes in probably popper heads clean off. I don't know what the attraction is of a federal agency coming to this town, but if it's just the dredging, the benefit doesn't weigh out the bull's stuff when it comes to just getting dredged versus having a place to go, you know, our office, it's like closing your office. They close that reef, you can't go to our office. You do go to our cubicle, you know, be it Arch Rock or wherever. Us fishermen have the best offices out there, and if we were stewards of the water and our jobs and take pride in what we do, we shouldn't need nitpicking regulatory factions coming down on us. We should just take pride in Port Orford, and if everybody just did a little bit of volunteer, we could have this place looking awesome. I don't know how to dredge sand, I'm sorry, but if I knew, I would do it. I think we have to look at Port Orford as a whole, look inside, and then see what we can't do, and see where we need the help.
Thank you. Let's see, is it Harry Allen?
Yep. My name is Harry Allen. I live in Coos Bay. I spent 18 years fishing out of Port Orford. Commercial fisherman, fished for 25 years off the Curry County coast. And I'm strongly opposed to the sanctuary idea. I do not support it in any way. It's a very stupid idea, I think, to allow the federal government to control our local resources. There's no legitimate reason to give up any waters off the coast of Oregon to be regulated by the federal government. We will lose all of our local control and lose valuable, sustainable fishing grounds. I believe in the Oregon Way.
Yeah. Let's see, Crystal Adams, please.
Hi. My name's Crystal Adams. I live in Coos Bay, Peal Box, 5392, Charleston. I'm Assistant Manager at Homeward Fisheries, and we have 180 employees that depend on, on fishing in Oregon, in Port Orford. Alone this time of year, we're usually shut down, only 56 people working that normally wouldn't be working. It's huge, and that's just right now, alone the rest of the time. We have a lot of regulations already that shut down our fisheries and we'd like to, you know, not open the door for more. That's all. Thank you.
Susan Chambers?
Good afternoon, my name is, excuse me, Susan Chambers. I represent the West Coast Seafood Processors. Our headquarters are in Portland, Oregon, 1618 Southwest First Avenue. I live in Charleston. Started fishing out here, worked for Harry. He gave me my first job. Let's see, I'm also a board member of the Southern Oregon Ocean Resources Coalition, and serve on the Groundfish Advisory Subpanel of the Federal Pacific Fisheries Management Council. I agree with what several of the speakers before me have said. Just three points, I want to be brief. I have more, but one of the most important things is the inclusion of outside stakeholders. There are a lot of fishermen from Washington, Oregon, California, who fish off of here in the federal waters. Pacific whiting, shrimp, abacortina, salmon, they should all be involved in this process in some capacity. Like other speakers also said, the use of the Ocean Policy Advisory Council would be a good idea. It's a trusted, entrusted public process. It was one of the process, it was the process that also established the Redfish Rocks Marine Reserve here. It would also save the city money, because as I understand, the city would have to look for funding in order to create a committee to look at Marine Sanctuary. OPAC has already established. The other thing I'd like to mention is to consider the cumulative effects. Off of Coos County right now, we have several wind and wave energy projects that would close off waters. Those fishermen who would fish in those areas would likely go north or south. There's a Marine Sanctuary, they probably couldn't come south, they would go north or where, somewhere else. This would affect processors in the Charleston area, as well as processors here in Port Orford. Those processors could close, or they would have to pay more to truck the fish down to have it processed. Or fishermen would have to deliver somewhere else, and those would lose, that would lose local jobs. That's all I have.
Nick Edwards?
My name's Nick Edwards. I reside out of Coos Bay, Oregon, at 63166 Bismuth Heights Road. I'm a commercial fisherman from Coos Bay, and I sit on the boards of the Oregon Dungeonist Crab Commission, the Oregon Wave Energy Trust, the Bannon Submarine Cable Council, Source, and Fish Dred, and I sit on the Territorial Sea Plant Advisory Committee for Wind and Wave Energy. I'm very concerned about the path the city of Port Orford is being led down. The city of Port Orford will lose local control when it opens the door to a federal agency that will supervise all aspects of marine resources. Local solutions will be out of your control. This has been the single largest lesson in the Monterey Sanctuary process. You will directly affect you and your port person, and this is what the Monterey Bay Sanctuary has learned. The Sanctuary can claim authority over the Corps of Engineers and the EPA in granting harbor dredging and material disposal permits. This is one of the most important issues for Port Orford and their fishermen. The potential is there to further hamper, hamper the much-needed dredging in Port Orford. The Sanctuary can directly affect and regulate agricultural practices, such as cranberries, which is very important to Port Orford. The Sanctuary clearly gives status to the protection of resources over all human uses. The Sanctuary controls areas up to mean-high tide and trump state jurisdiction. In Monterey Bay, you can't walk your dog on some beaches. No fireworks on the beaches, and some beaches are closed for sea lion roosters. The promise of federal dollars for collaborative research, what a farce. This expectation for the fishing community, for fishermen interaction and data gathering, this never happened in the Monterey Bay Sanctuary process, and no federal dollars were spent on collaborative research. The assumption that the Sanctuary will offer permanent protection against oil and gas development, the Sanctuary will not include prohibition against this in any Sanctuary designation document. There was a report done by environmental attorneys on this issue, and Congress will override this designation document. What the city of Port Orford is contemplating is opening Pandora's Box. Monterey Bay Sanctuary alone is over 6,000 square miles. That's only one. Then you have Cordell Banks, Fairlawn Islands, Davidson Seamount, but one is 6,000 square miles. Why does the city of, of Port Orford feel the right that they have to organize a National Marine Sanctuary without the outreach of the permitted vessels that are the existing user groups which use these areas on a daily basis? This is not good for Oregon, it's not good for the coastal communities. The fishermen of Port Orford are divided, as ever, about how Port Orford's marine stewardship area is being used. The Port Orford Ocean Resource Team has been accused of misrepresenting other fleet in Port Orford and was publicly called out at the territorial sea plan process by Port Orford fishermen. I've fished in the waters of Port Orford for 35 years, and I have a professional working relationship with Port Orford fishermen. This is the most detrimental idea to Oregon I've ever witnessed, without a doubt whatsoever. The marine stewardship area should be revisited by Oregon and its citizens.
I'd like to remind everybody, you know, the council here is just, all's we're here for is to decide if we want to establish a committee to look further into this, to find out the pros and cons. We're not the bad guys. I hope it changes your mind. Okay, so, let's go on. Brad, Brad, I can't read your last name.
Penner.
Penner, okay, very good, thank you. Please state your name and, or your name and address.
My name is Brad Penner, I'm the Brookings, Oregon. Lifetime resident of Curry County, lifetime fisherman, prior to taking over position of Oregon Trout Commission the last 10 years. I'm also a member of OPAC, focusing on commercial South Coast fisheries. There's a very good testimony here that, about people's concerns. We talk about National Marine Sanctuaries, there are a lot of promises, a lot of hope about what they can bring. I think the letter that was, or the speech that was read from Nancy Fossmar, kind of illustrates that. You know, I hear everybody say, but even given that, you hear people say, gee, look at this stuff from Monterey, and it's just wonderful, it's a sanctuary. I can bet you that dime's a dollar, 99% of people go in, it's a sanctuary there. I mean, you walk down there, you'd have no idea it's a sanctuary. I mean, so, the fact that there's a sanctuary in place doesn't mean that place is better. I fished out there in the 70s when I was a little kid. It looks just the same now as it did then. So, there's a lot of, no, don't pull into that, that a sanctuary is going to bring you a lot of economic development. It isn't going to happen. I think that, you know, right now, the state, or the fisheries manage out to three miles in the state of, off the coast here. Outside, 12 miles, or three miles, it's the, by the feds, the Pacific Fish Management Council. I think those bodies do a really good job with what they, what they've got. I think that the council process, the Pacific Fish Management Council, is probably the most open and transparent process. I think that the council process, the Pacific Fishery Management Council is probably the most open and transparent process ever. As far as getting a concern, you can bring it out, it's heard, it gets vetted. You'll get that in a National Marine Sanctuary. I've seen people from the Sanctuary come and give presentations to the council, to the council or to the council bodies. By law, they must consult, but they must not, they don't necessarily have to do anything. All they are is consulting if they have to. I tell you what, there's nothing more disconcerting than an industry member to be talking to somebody, giving their point of view, and they have that blank sheen across their eyes because they're not listening. They're there just to consult because they have to. They're going to do their own thing. I think you'd be very careful about turning that, you know, that kind of power over to somebody who really, your messages aren't apart. I would beat the say the thing to death, but, sorry, a couple of points, and one last point. Last year, the top two fisheries at dollar value in Oregon were state managed. Oregon Dusis Crab Fishery and the Oregon Bigfoot Fishery. I don't think you want to do anything that would impede the management of those fisheries by the state of Oregon. That's all I got. I couldn't say what more so. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see, Bob Barrow?
I'm just another commercial fisherman. Same old, these guys have put the point pretty well across. Thank you for your support.
Ross Brown?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Ross Brown, 953-95637, Jerry's Flat Road, Gold Beach. I own a fishing boat in Brookings, fish side of Brookings. By way of background, I was on the group that wrote the Oregon Territorial Sea Plan. I was on the original one. I was on the group that wrote the Oregon Ocean Plan. I spent nine years on the Pacific Fisheries Management Council as a voting member. While I was there, the Sanctuary people started coming to council meetings with requests. And during that time, I changed from a supporter of the Sanctuary program to an opponent of the Sanctuary program. Currently, there are sanctuaries, Channel Islands, Southern California, Monterey, Fairlawn Islands, Cordell Banks, and the Olympic Peninsula. I actually wrote letters of support for the Olympic Peninsula and Monterey. You've heard from Kathy Fosmark, who I met while I was on the Management Council, about the Monterey process. And every one of those people come to me with the same story when I was on the Management Council. The people from the sanctuaries came to talk to the Pacific Fisheries Management Council to request that we close areas for fishing. For various assorted reasons, generally it was all by a contingent here. Another thing that would be on the bottom wasn't the entire sanctuary. Our attorney advised us that the law was very unclear who actually had authority to manage fisheries in marine sanctuaries. It was quite clear that if the Pacific Fisheries Management Council did not manage fisheries in the sanctuary, that the Sanctuary people had the authority to manage fisheries. It was very clear. What wasn't clear was that if the Pacific Fisheries Management Council were to take a choice, make a choice that was counter to the wishes of the Sanctuary Committee, who would prevail? That has never been adjudicated. It's a real gray area. It's also not clear, it was not clear, who would prevail in the case of state-managed fisheries that were managed in federal waters. MAXN Act clearly gives, the Fisher Constellation Management Act, clearly gives authority to the states to manage fisheries that are not managed by the Pacific Fisheries Management Council through their management plans. To boat, for boats that are licensed in the state. However, it's not clear whether that would be usurped by the, by the Sanctuary management or not. Something you definitely need to check on. It's also not clear who actually has to be consistent with who on, in terms of federal consistency between states and federal regulations in sanctuaries. The Sanctuary program has been one, and if you could please give me about a minute warning when my time's up because I could go on for a long time. The Sanctuary program has been one of Mission Creek to a point where it wouldn't be recognized by the people who proposed it originally. The first sanctuary was literally the US, US? I don't know if you, I guess it was US. Monitor, during Civil War, boat, submarine. Divers are going down and picking pieces off. So it was believed that this would stop them. And it did. But it was a very discreet location around that boat for the purpose of protecting things that had cultural and heritage importance, historical importance to the people of the United States. All of the, all of the sanctuaries prior to Monterey Bay were pretty small areas. Monterey Bay pushed that the environmental qualities of the bay were important. Cultural heritage and national heritage should therefore deserve sanctuary status. That was not the original intention. But every sanctuary since then has been on that. People have mentioned the number of sanctuaries that mentioned Monterey is 6,000 square miles.
After the expansion of the Bandit Marsh. Two years ago, they came down and it was one of those little federal things that was just going to be a 635 acre restoration. And everybody was going to be happy with it. It was going to cost $4.2 million. Well, guess what? It turned into 1,010 acres. They spent over $16 million. We've never been able to set foot on the site since they got it. They have signs all over it and they will arrest you. And we fought them tooth and nail because they held a meeting that wasn't properly advertised. And I went to the meeting, they threatened to arrest me, wouldn't answer my questions. And they told me the same thing I've been told by both Fish and Wildlife, BLM and Forest Service. With the federal government, we can do anything we want, and there's nothing you can do about it. I want you to know there is. And you do not need, if you look at what the federal agencies are doing to rural Oregon, we don't need any more of this. You guys need to maintain control of your assets because if opportunities present themselves in the future for real economic development and use, you want to have the control. You don't want to be known as the people that handed it away. We also have a thing here called New River. Everybody know where that is?
Yeah.
You know what we were told about New River? They were going to put in a road and a toilet so people wouldn't, so the older people could get down there and fish. They wouldn't have to pay a dollar anymore. It was going to be a great thing. What did they do? They spent $7.5 million, shut the road off, and you can't get in there most of the year. When you try to walk on the beaches here, who's getting the $300 tickets? It's not the tourists, it's the local people. Do some investigating and see who they're writing tickets to. Jim Kemp's Fieldhand got a ticket. Diane Nielsen or Diane Marsh got a ticket. These are people that have been walking on that beach and picking up trash their whole lives. They're getting $300 or $400 tickets for trespassing. Don't let them get their nose under the tent here. Understand something, the road closure in the New River has absolutely nothing to do with the snowy plover. I've talked to Laura Todd, she's a biologist that covers all that with Fish and Wildlife. They still won't give us a straight answer, other than we're the federal government, we can do anything we want. So don't do this. This is a bad move and it's a bad deal all the way around. And my advice to the citizens in the room. Number one, get involved. If they decide to form this committee, I suggest you put everybody's name in a hat and pull the members out blindly. And let everybody that wants to be a member of that committee be a member. And take community activists in on both sides. But don't pick them by the preconceived notions. Put them in a hat and pull it out. Because the bottom line is, these people want to come in here, they want to put this reserve in, and as soon as that happens, you're going to lose your control. You read the print in this thing, it even says they can go three miles inland and start doing things like sewer leaks. And are you affecting their reserve? And then they can file lawsuits, which is their favorite thing. And what these federal agencies do, when we finally backed them into a wall, thanks to Mr. Sweet here and my commissioner and my mayor and other people, because children were being hurt and people couldn't get out of their houses from the mosquitoes, they had to change a policy they said they'd never change. But before they changed the policy, they called one of their environmental groups, called the Xerxes Foundation, and suddenly we had environmentalists out of Portland threatening lawsuits over spraying to kill mosquitoes. They actually had people come down and say that a mosquito is important as a child. That's the silliest thing I've ever heard. Needless to say, we made them change a national level policy, and we're moving forward to run them out of this county. Nothing good has come out of any of these federal agencies. My advice again to you guys, refer this to your county commissioners. This is a big issue. They think they can come into a small town and get their foot under the door. Refer this to your commissioners, put it up for a public vote.
That's it.
And see what happens. Because that's what we did. We went to our commissioners, we got them to sign a really clean resolution that one of them wrote. We let the public vote on it, and you know what? We spent less than $6,000 and we won that vote on a 72% margin. So guess what? Democracy in action works. And for you guys in the room, get involved. Don't wait until this happens. Get involved right now. Get in there and get on these committees, tell your commissioners, stay involved. Stay involved in the political organization. Because I'm telling you, you, we just fought a tooth and nail battle. On four different occasions, I've had Fish and Wildlife Service threaten to arrest me. I've had them go around asking people if I'm a nutbag and is there a reason to arrest me? A lot of people said there was. And I came right down to it. You know what the bottom line is? I'm a guy, he's a Navy veteran, I work in health administration. I actually helped Millie Byrd down here years ago get your assisted living community built down there in Curry County. I know Tom Pitchford, I know.
Wait, whoa, whoa.
Your motion is to not establish. Your motion is to not establish, so you see, Richard.
Okay, call for the vote.
Can I vote?
Yes. We're not established, so.
No, no.
It's all over again.
Caroline, next.
Your motion is to not establish a committee to explore a National Marine Sanctuary.
Right.
If you agree to not establish a committee, your vote is yes. Otherwise, it's no.
You want a yes vote?
That's the eye.
Sam, yes.
All right.
I'd like to thank everybody for their professional input tonight. I really appreciate it, and I appreciate everybody behaving. Thank you for your support.